Good afternoon. It is 4:31. I will call the Common Council Executive Committee meeting of November 7th to order and ask staff to call the roll.
President Curry?
Here.
Vice President Figaro Cole?
Here.
Alder Vediver?
Here.
Alder Madison?
Here.
Alder Govindarajan?
Here.
Alder Conklin?
Here.
Alder Evers?
Here.
Alder Bennett? You have quorum.
Thank you, Karen. We will move on to approval of minutes for our last meeting of October 17th. Draft minutes are located on your agenda. I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you. And unless I see her here otherwise, I will assume unanimous consent. That is the case. Thank you. Just searched or looked at our registration. We do not have any registrants for public comments. That'll take us to disclosures and recusals. Members of the body should make any required disclosures or recusals under the city's ethics code. Do we have any disclosures or recusals? Seeing none, that'll take us into our first item of consideration, which is Agenda Item Number Two, Legislative File 80630, MPD 2023 Third-Party Transport Experiment Update. And I see we have Assistant Chief Patterson joining us virtually. Take it away, JP.
Excellent. Thank you, President Curry. I have about seven slides that I'd love to show. Is there any chance I can share my screen?
Yes.
Perfect. All right. Hopefully, hopefully you can see this. Able to see the presentation now?
Arianna, are you able to help out?
Yeah, so the sharing option is selected already on my end, so it might be on his end. I will take a double check here, though.
You're not able to see it currently?
No, we're not seeing anything at this.
All right, hang on. Let me try again.
Oh, there we go.
Yay. All right. Still good?
Yes, we see.
I hope so. All right. Perfect. All right, I'll hop into it and please just let me know if you don't see the next slides here. But thank you for the opportunity to come and speak to you all. This is my first CCEC meeting this year, so I'm excited here. So especially this topic. And as you, as you remember, back in 2023, when we were right around this time, we started talking about a budget amendment to the 2023 operating budget for the police department. And special thank you to Vice President Figaro Cole for really pushing this forward after Alder Lemmer handed it off in early 2023 to her, but really kept the momentum going. And what resulted was a budget amendment for $50,000 that was funded through our salary savings line to fund a third-party transport experiment. And so just to kind of take a step back before I dive into exactly how the experiment went over the summer months this year. The experiment was meant to target patients that were being transported from the city of Madison to Winnebago Mental Health. And you'll often hear MPD staff refer to that as WMHI. And so Winnebago Mental Health is the only state facility currently that accepts any emergency detention patients, which are also referred to as ED patients. At times, hospitals can be utilized, but as you can imagine, their capacity is very limited with beds and the types of patients that they're willing to admit. So the vast majority every year are taken to Winnebago Mental Health by MPD. And so we use two officers and have historically two officers to take a patient up to Winnebago Mental Health. And historically, that takes about six hours to make that trip, that round trip. So combined total of 12 officer work hours per transport. Sometimes it can be more, you know, depending on the wait once they get to Winnebago Mental Health, or if there's, you know, some sort of traffic incident or something like that on the way up there. So the catalyst to this experiment was also a change of state law a couple of years ago now that allowed for ED transports to be outsourced by municipalities. And so just taking a look at our annual transports that have occurred over the past several years, there's been a pretty frequent number of them since 2017. And in the blue bar, if you can't read it, I apologize, it's a little small. Those are the total number of civil commitments or emergency detentions completed, and then the total number of conveyances to Winnebago Mental Health are the yellow bar. So you can see a pretty sharp uptick in 2021, and then again in 2022, it's staying pretty consistent with that uptick in '21. But in 2021, there were 231 transports, and then in 2022, last year, there was 220. So again, this, the whole process is very lengthy. If you just look at it as a whole, including the transport all the time at hospitals and just, you know, walking patients through the process, it can take upwards of 12 hours total. Round trips, again, six hours for two officers at a time. And in 2022, you know, just using simple math there, if you take the 220 transports that we had, that's the equivalent of 2,640 work hours total. So it's 330 full officer work shifts. So when you think about that amount of time that police officers were gone from the city of Madison, not taking other calls, not doing other work within Madison, and spending all that time basically on the road completing transports. So it gets a little tricky when I try to put an actual dollar figure on what it costs for officers to do these transports. And so, you know, as you know, an officer who we hire this year makes far less than an officer who may have 20 years on. So I used the average hourly officer rate on regular time. And for two officers to complete a six-hour transport, it is an average of about $691.56 per transport. And so if we assumed that all of them were done on regular time in 2022, which we can't unfortunately do, but if we did, it was, it's about $152,000 that that would have cost to do all of those on regular time. Now, a lot of them unfortunately have to be done on overtime based on a number of factors, and using that same average hourly overtime rate, then the individual transport for two officers to take a patient up to Winnebago is $960. And if we assumed all of them were done on overtime, then it's about $198,000 cost in 2022. And so what I would propose, though, is that the actual costs are likely higher than even that overtime rate, because when you have 330 full officer work shifts essentially disappear from the everyday, that creates other impacts around the city. So those are officers that aren't responding to other calls for service and potentially making overtime impacts as a result when other calls are coming in and requiring other individuals to either stay light on their shifts or even get called in early. And so fast forward then to this last, or I guess not really a fast forward, because it happened already, but if we move forward in time from 2022 to spring of '23, we started a competitive RFP, and Ready Transport was awarded the contract. So all of you know that they were the only vendor at the time that responded. And after the RFP was closed and the contract was already, was already signed, we had another vendor then reach out saying, you know, we regret not responding to that RFP, and if there are future RFPs, we want to be included. So we're hoping that moving forward, there'd be some competition. But we did start the experiment then with the signed contract on June 1st, and it ran through August 8th. And August 8th was when we felt the funding was likely exhausted. And we chose those summer months intentionally because that's typically when transport volume is a little bit higher. The calls for service are greater, and we find our officers responding to more of these emergency detention types of calls. And so in that time period, we completed 53 transports with Ready Transport, and you can see below how they were kind of broken out by shift. The night shift, the 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM shift, was clearly the busiest for Ready with 30 transports during that time. Right. Now you can see, I wanted to just include just, you know, some pictures there so you can kind of get an idea of what the differences are. On your left, obviously, your typical Madison squad car, and then on the right, the Ready Transport van. They're all basically minivans, like a Dodge Caravan-type transport vehicle. So I think I might have skipped a slide here, so let me jump back. I guess I did. Sorry about that. So I'll back up from the photos, and then I'll skip, I'll skip ahead once I get through this slide. But Ready, during the experiment, they invoiced us for each individual transport. And so the costs for them ranged anywhere from $700 was the lowest cost to $1,335 for the highest cost, and it depended on whether or not they transported on a weekend or after 11:00 PM. So they had different costs based on driver availability and time of day and day of week. So that averaged out then for the 53 at $888 per transport. And they have indicated since that if they respond or when they respond to a future RFP, that they will lock in a set price for every transport, and we will not see that fluctuation like we did during the experiment. So using that 888 is how we created an estimate for a full year of transports in the future, and that's where you have seen us cite $200,000 as a potential full year of transport funding. As you know, the executive operating budget, and we're very grateful to the mayor for including $100,000 for third-party transports. And what that means, obviously, the difference between what we estimated and what's included is we will have to do some work to maximize that budget. And so we're talking about, you know, adjusting the scope or perhaps limiting the times or the months that we're utilizing the third-party transport service that we ultimately secure through the RFP. So jumping ahead past the photos then is my last slide for you. Patient surveying obviously was not possible, and, you know, when you look at this, at this experiment and this concept in general, clearly, the patient experience, you know, we're removing hours of time in the back of a squad car with uniformed officers away from what can really be a very traumatic experience for the patient overall. And so, you know, it would have been nice to survey them, but we couldn't. But I did survey the officers that participated. So I had 52 officers respond, and you can kind of see some of the takeaways that they offered. But, you know, over, I've done a lot of surveys at the MPD, and this was by far, I can say with a straight face, the most positive return that I've ever experienced in any survey. But 98% have asked for it to continue, and 100% said that the staff at Ready offered was professional, and they always arrived with the needed equipment. And the vast majority, so 91%, arrived within two hours of us calling. Now, since the experiment's completed, they've hired some staff in the Dane County area. The majority of the drivers that responded to Madison were coming from like the Fox Valley area, so Oshkosh, Appleton, Green Bay. And then I just included a couple quotes that came in the free text of the survey, very positive. And then we also received positive feedback both from Journey staff and from some of the local hospitals. So that was just kind of a quick overview, and I obviously want to leave some time for questions, but that's all I have for slides.
Thank you so much, Assistant Chief Patterson, for the information in PowerPoint. Any questions, comments from the body? Not seeing any. My monitor went to sleep. I apologize. Vice President Figaro Cole?
Thank you. Thank you, John, for presenting all that information from so many different angles. So I have two questions for you, and one, I just, it just came to mind. Do the minivans or cars, the transport, the transport car that they use, do they have cameras inside the car?
Yes, they do. They do film each transport for the safety of the patient and the staff that's conducting the transport.
Okay, good. So that will be part of the RFP in the future, I suppose?
Yes. Yes, we can certainly include that, absolutely.
Thank you. And then when it comes to data collection, can we, I mean, I really want to continue to collect data on this for the next six months to a year to see what the trend is. And I know that the county's working on that crisis center, but in the meantime, I like to kind of collect how it goes, but also in relation with the CARES program, like what's CARES, the one who requested the transport versus MPD? Like, how does that interact with the, with the entire ecosystem for these transports? If that data can be collected, that would be great.
No, that's a good, that's a good point, and I'll work with Che, and maybe there's some, you know, some data that we can work with together to show us who the familiar faces may be that both CARES and MPD may be, you know, coming into contact with, absolutely.
No, so, I mean, I don't know if it's so much, you know, never mind. I was gonna ask about repeats, but I don't know if that will even be relevant. If it's a repeat or not, it doesn't matter, it's needed, so. But I don't know.
That's a good question. We could certainly look at that, Alder.
I mean, I guess like if you have repeats, I guess it would be a point for maybe even CARES or some other providers to provide some support for that particular person if we, if that was the case. So maybe that is important, the data point.
Definitely look at that.
Thank you so much, John. We appreciate it.
No, thank you all for the support on this. This, I think, was a very, a very worthy effort, so thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Figaro Cole. Alder Conklin?
Thank you, Chair. I have a question for you, Assistant Chief Patterson. Now, you said that these folks, the third party, were coming from a ways away. Did we ever have overlapping, like, well, I guess my first question is, do they only have one vehicle for this?
They have several vehicles. So they, they have satellite offices throughout the Midwest, actually, this particular company. So they, they were just at this point in time deploying drivers from the Fox Valley region, but they had multiple vehicles.
Okay, so follow-up then is, did we have times, like especially during that 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM, did we have multiple calls coming from us to transport people at the same time, if that makes sense?
It does make sense, and that's a really darn good answer, question, but I don't know how many duplicate calls we had on particular nights. I can get that information and get it to you. It was, it was a really quick learning process, I would say, though, to figure out when to make the actual call so that we would not have a patient waiting for a, for a transport. You know, some of it was dependent on the hospital medical clearance and the work that the hospital needed to do to prepare the patient, but it was, it was pretty smooth overall, and there was very little wait time for the patient.
And were most patients picked up from the hospital?
All except one, yes. So I think that trend will continue where they'll be picked up, you know, by Ready or by whichever company we end up with from the hospital.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Vediver?
Can you tell us what conversations you've had with the county in regards to the proposed crisis treatment center that they're working on trying to develop in the Madison area?
That's a good question. They've been very early discussions. I have not gotten into any in-depth detail, Alder, on that. There have been other jurisdictions, though, that have reached out about this particular service and have asked for our reports. And I know UWPD is, they've either secured a contract or they're actively pursuing an RFP for the same service.
All right. Thank you, Alder Vediver. I am not seeing any other hands raised virtually or in chambers. So if that is all, again, thank you for your time, Assistant Chief Patterson, and the information, and hope you have a good rest of your day. All right, that was the information item. That will move us along to Agenda Item Three, Legislative File 80342, Amending Section 2.29, Sub 3, Related to Alder Question and Answer Following Public Comments of the Madison General Ordinance to Impose a Time Limit for Each Alder Questioning Public Comment Regent. I know that Alder Bennett, or I believe Alder Bennett is the lead sponsor on this measure and is also attending online. Alder Bennett, are you, do you have the capacity to share a little background with us today?
Yeah, sure. Happy to. Does there need to be a motion in a second, or am I just?
You're right. I do need a motion, because we are seeking action on this. It will be referred to the Common Council meeting after this. We have a motion to adopt from Alder, or Vice President Figaro Cole. Alder Vediver, is that a second? All right. Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Alder Bennett.
Thanks. So this was kind of a reflection on myself and something that I think will help our processes move faster. Or, yeah, at the end of the day, it kind of adopts the five-minute rule that is used on the congressional floor, which basically allows for a representative questioning of a speaker only for five minutes total. And that way, we can, because essentially, right now, as it stands, all questioning to a constituent can last indefinitely. So it essentially becomes an entire new time period for the respondent to speak, but then also can last quite a long time if gone unchecked. So of course, I'm assuming, I'm assuming that there will be times where we have people that we want to hear from to speak longer than the five minutes that is allotted, and we can take that up as is. But I think it'll be good to make it a practice to have, have some sort of guidelines for how long we should be asking residents to answer questions from, questions from us.
Thank you, Alder Bennett. I have a question offhand, maybe for Attorney Haas, or if you could help with the history. I'm looking at the texts now in Legistar, and it's saying that, was there an amended version, or is there only one version of this? One version, the amendment. Okay, I'm reading it wrong. Each alder may, I guess I was thrown off because I was thinking that it would limit Alder's five minutes to questions during the question round on a topic, but then the underlined added is each alder may question each registrant for up to five minutes, including the time for the registrant responses. Guess I don't have a question, it's more of a comment, never mind. And Alder Field has his hand raised.
Thank you, Chair. I was wondering if anybody knows if this is going to require the mayor, the clerk, or someone else to change how they are currently tracking the amount of time that Alders speak for. I'm not actually sure if that happens right now.
Do you want me to take?
Yes, please.
Well, it's a good question, because I don't, you know, neither this ordinance or the existing ordinance about time for Alders to debate specifies who tracks time. I think practically speaking, the mayor, I don't know if the mayor gets any assistance from the clerk on staff, but the mayor is really the one that highlights, you know, you have 30 seconds or your time is coming to a close. So I presume, you know, the mayor would be keeping track of that time. I don't know if the mayor will have any comments at the council about the logistics of that. But I think it would essentially be up to the mayor to, to alert Alders. I did want to point out one additional aspect of this. As Alder Bennett alluded to, it is intended to sort of mirror what happens in congressional hearings, but that does involve, you know, once an alder is done asking their questions of their registrant, even if it's one question and they're done in 30 seconds, they are not entitled to come back and ask more questions of that registrant once their questioning is done and it moves on to another alder. And that would be, I mean, a significant change from the current practice, which is Alders can jump back and forth and ask questions. Alders can jump back and forth and ask questions at different times of the same register.
A clarification. Thank you, Attorney Haas. So, I see the point about if they finish their series of questions in less than five minutes, their remaining time should be forfeited. Is that for individual, okay, I saw your.
Just for that register.
Thank you for that clarification. Alder Field, did that answer your question?
It did. Nothing further. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any discussion? Alder Evers?
Thank you, President. I'm not inclined to support this. I understand the good faith efforts to try to come up with policy changes to shorten the length of our meetings, to make things run more smoothly, but I really think the answer to all of this is that individuals exercise self-discipline, that are, that we all take seriously our commitment to this job, prepare ourselves for our council meeting, study the agenda, get our questions answered beforehand, conduct ourselves in a reasonable way, don't, don't engage in performative behavior, stick to the task at hand, and our meetings, I think, will take care of themselves. I am not, I appreciate the goodwill gestures to come up with policy changes to achieve this, but I don't think that's what the source of the problem is. I think if we all just exercise more self-discipline, the problem will take care of itself. So, with all due respect, I think I'm a no on this one. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder Evers. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I will move us, or, we already have a motion on the floor to adopt unless I see or hear otherwise. Safe to assume unanimous consent. I'm sorry. My brain is not working. Alder Evers clearly just said he is not supporting, so let's go to roll call. All right. Vice President Figueroa Cole?
I don't know. So, I mean, yes, maybe if the vast is fine, maybe also it's okay, but I.
Sorry.
Because I should ask, how is this going to work? Can I ask one more question?
If there's no objection.
Is there any objection from the body for Vice President Figueroa asking a question? Seeing none. Go ahead.
So, this is per person, then? So, if you have another questions, 10 people, then that's 50 minutes that we, that the alder gets to question people? Is that what I'm reading?
Five minutes maximum per alder, per registrant.
Okay. Yeah.
And this, obviously, this is only a vote to recommend to councils, so there obviously could be more debate discussion at the council.
Yeah, I mean, I'll say yes, and then discuss it on council and figure out they are giving us more thought. So, yes, it's fine.
Alder Vidiver?
Hi.
Alder Madison?
No.
Alder Govindarajan? Alder Conklin?
No.
And I have Alder Evers. That's a no. Is that correct?
That's correct. No.
Thank you. President Curry, non-voting. Alder Bennett's the alternate and not voting with everyone else here. So, we have four noes and two ayes.
With four noes and two ayes, that measure does not pass. That will take us on to Agenda Item 4, Legislative File 80576, Poet Laureate Request, Poet Recitation, Reciting Schedule for 2024 Common Council Meetings. Is this, this is an action point. So, can I have a motion on the item? Thank you, Alder Conklin. I have a second. Second by Alder Govindarajan. All right. I know when we were discussing this council leadership and the chief of staff, none of us really had the historical context of why it's before CCEC to approve, but I wonder, no, it doesn't look like we have any more information since our last meeting. This item would have a poet laureate where they're designated, recite a poem in chambers on Tuesday, March 5, 2024, Tuesday, June 4, Tuesday, September 10, and Tuesday, September 10, and Tuesday, December 10. All right, not, not seeing any hands for discussion or questions. I would assume unanimous consent unless I see or hear otherwise. And that is the case. That motion passes. Thank you. That moves us into Agenda Item number 5, Legislative File Number 80298, Determining Proposed Amount of 2025 Alder Pay Increase. As a reminder, this is a continuation of the same item for discussion purposes from our last meeting, but we did ask, and thankfully, members of our finance team, we have Finance Director Schmiedeke, and, I'm sorry, Christine, I don't know your exact role, but Christine Co. from the Finance Department joining us. Would either of you like to speak to any of the content? Okay. So, in Legisstar, and thank you for your work in preparing that information for us. I know that I had made a verbal reminder to Alders, or I think I asked a question last meeting regarding the COLAR cost of living increase and Alders being affected by that and what would be, what will be the potential alder pay based on that. We also have the table that has been entered into Legisstar on this item in previous meetings that shows according to the hours per week and rate of pay, broken down by how a household defines themselves. So, all the way from one adult, no children, to adults with children, and a, I believe, recap of what we talked about last time. Believe there was a recommendation or a proposal by one of our members to double the current pay, and there was some dispute or pushback against that from other members according to the cost of that. So, lands us here today with information prepared by the finance team and in hopes that we can determine a amenable cost to propose to our, the body of the whole regarding increasing alder pay. Any questions, comments? Vice President Figueroa Cole?
Do we take a look at the spreadsheet?
We could share a screen if that's what your request is.
Also, I don't know if the other, I would like to know if the other committee members had a chance to play with it in order to make a recommendation.
Sure. So, on the screen. Maybe. Yes, please.
I will do my best. Finance, you can always help me if I get it wrong.
Yes, we'll find, yes, someone can explain it.
Okay. So, we've got, I'll just look at mine here. So, if you see here, at the base rate, obviously, then they calculated that there's no 2025 impact. You see that on, on line 19 here. The next proposal that they ran through was the proposal to add $5,000 per alder, and this is the anticipated 2025 impact, $81,191. And then, they ran the possibility of a double, doubling of the alder salaries, $245,650 impact, and then they tried the Madison mean, median, I think it was the median hourly wage as of May 22, 2022, that was on the spreadsheet, the other spreadsheet we have, came up with $279,740. Now, if I understand this correctly, they did not, let's see the notes. They made the note that, of course, President and Vice President are in addition. So, let me take a quick, because the pay is slightly different for them. Do you know, Finance folks, if the $81,191 is for all 20 or just 18? I mean, that doesn't maybe matter a whole lot, but. Thanks. Yeah, this, so, like here, you know. For all 20. It does account for that. Okay, perfect. So, the, this, this line 19, thank you. This line 19 includes all 20 and accounts for the, she said, it accounts for the premium for leadership because leadership in the ordinance is paid a slightly higher rate. So, I just wanted to make sure that was for all 20. So, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the clarification. I know folks didn't hear, but Christine came up and helped with that. All right. Any thoughts, looking at the numbers and actualization?
Did anybody else, you play with this, oh, Regina's maybe.
Alder Vidiver?
Yeah, just a notation that, right, we're projecting a structural budget deficit for years going forward, so any of these increases are only gonna add to that. So, it's just gonna be a hard sell.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett? Alder Bennett?
I love it when I'm talking and I'm not muted. Can you pull up the spreadsheet again? I just wasn't able to grab it. Thanks so much. I don't know if anyone else would like to speak, I would like to say something, but I'd like to digest the numbers a little bit more.
Sure, we can come back to you, Alder Bennett. Alder Evers also is in the queue. Alder Evers, go.
Yep. In reference to what Alder Vidiver just said about dealing with the structural deficit and the political challenges of Alders voting themselves a pay increase, I think one of the things that we could, as a committee, as the executive committee, as the common council, the executive committee, is that we could propose that the mayor and her executive budget for 2025 would include a recommended pay increase. I suggest that because it is, it would be less contentious from a standpoint from the Alders having to somehow or another pass this honor from a budget standpoint around. We still have to, of course, I think, change, and Attorney Haas can clarify this, we'd have to, two-thirds or three-quarters vote, vote for some kind of ordinance change, but strategically, I think, a request that the mayor put this into where his executive budget would be prudent on our behalf and takes us somewhat out of this whole kind of unseemly, you know, fraught situation with Alders requesting their, you know, trying to pass their own pay increase, and politically, in the current climate, I'm just being realistic, not likely to go over very well with the residents of our city. That's all. Thanks.
Thanks, Alder Evers. I'm gonna seek a point of clarification because I think this was something that was miscommunicated or misinterpreted from members of the public last session when we were talking about this of whether or not the current Alders on the body would then have that raise go into effect, and so, this raise, if current Alders are re-elected in 2025, would impact them, but it wouldn't go into effect until then. So, essentially, yes, thinking of ourselves and the job, but also thinking of those who may come after us. Alder Bennett, did you still need a little bit more time, or?
No, just a question. Why is the hours per week only 20? Is it because we're technically part-time employees and not full-time employees?
Yes.
Okay, sweet. Yeah. Also, I think that, in general, should eventually be amended, but, yeah, I, I'm sure everyone knows, like, that I'm very supportive of this measure. I think it's long overdue, and I think that we can't do the work of the city effectively unless we are compensated as such to not be literally struggling with housing and food insecurities ourselves. As the saying goes, put your own oxygen mask on first before you can put on anyone else's. So, I, I know, like, there might be issues with other people wanting this, but I believe that strongly, we need to put first and foremost in this conversation that this is essential to the body and to the city of Madison for the best representation that our constituents deserve.
Thank you, Alder Bennett. I guess I'll ask a question in return, and if you have an answer, Alder Evers is in the queue, I'll go back to you, but based on what's presented to us, we have sensed that there's strong energy into increasing, but we asked for this table to be prepared for us to have conversations about what we would like to recommend forward to the council. Is there one of these proposals that would mitigate what you were just talking?
I kind of feel like it would be nice if we didn't just view it in terms of, like, one solitary increase, and we instead did a more, like, scaled increase amongst, like, between budgets, and then also, instead of just comparing to Madison average hourly wage, I think we should be comparing it possibly to area and county median income levels, and then also looking at levels of, like, the federal income poverty levels and what that looks like for single, two-family, three-family people, because even just looking at the average Madison hourly wage, like, that doesn't really say anything towards, like, what is actually necessary for what is a levelable wage for, you know, a single mom with kids, for example, that just kind of shows what the average is. So, if we truly want to be recruiting people to these positions, then we need to be looking at what are the incomes that they need to sustain themselves, and then looking at how we can include that in our budget with a scaled approach.
Thank you, Alder Bennett. Alder Evers?
Thanks, President. A scaled approach is the reason why I recommended that we look at something more on the order of a $5,000 increase, and, and perhaps there could be incremental increases over a period of time, and we could talk about setting a goal for a particular period of time, but, you know, we also have to look at the whole TFOGS endeavor and what that committee, through their two years of meeting, what they recommended, and the process of what, when we took this to the voters, perhaps the marketing on that and the way we went about the referendum was insufficient or flawed. There were questions at the time. There were questions at the time suggesting that it may have been a flawed approach, but the feedback we got at the time did not encourage either a full-time salary or a full-time, or a commensurate salary in the neighborhood of what a Madison average hourly wage or a, or a full-time wage might be. It's still regarded as a part-time job. And it, and unless we are moving towards the idea of making this a full-time job, which Alder Vidver and our previously median suggested, that one way to justify that would be to reduce the number of alders because we are an outlier among cities our size throughout the country to have as many alders as we do. So I think we have to have the historical context of how we got to this point, going back to the TFOGS committee. At any rate, I think strategically it makes sense to not try to do it all at once. I think doubling would be too much of an increase. But an incremental increase and starting with the $5,000 increase, which I think would get the hourly rate anyways close to what the lowest city of Madison employee gets paid on an hourly basis, roughly commensurate to that. At least that was the case last year. So that's the reason why I suggested this smaller incremental step, which could then be a basis for additional incremental increases moving forward. But understanding that this is in a political environment of a structural deficit where we may be looking at laying employees off in the next budget cycle. So I think we have to be realistic of what that means and what that looks like. Thank you.
My own mic back on. Vice, Alder Govendarajan.
Thank you. Generally speaking, I think, I, I still haven't heard a specific proposal being brought up. So I'll push forward the Madison average hourly wage, May 22, 2022, one. Generally speaking, I don't know if we want to do a scaled version of that, which I think is a valid discussion to have. But I understand the political realities that obviously it never looks good for alders to raise their own wage. But I do think that we, many, like, the hours on there are not very accurate. Many of us put much more than 20 hours in this, especially a week like this week or next week where the budget is happening. I assume if we could do 20 hours, most of us would be very happy, but that's just not the reality. And this council ages ago decided that it's worthwhile to have a student seat on this council. And just looking at this from a broader historical, like, big-picture view, chances are most likely, like, the person in the seat for all of history and then like all of the future, there's a bigger chance than not that they will be the person who is not as economically advantaged as other people on this council. And if this council decades ago said that we want a student voice on here, that means that we should also make it possible to make sure that there is a student voice. Again, I'm heavily opposed to limiting the number of alders to 10 or 15 or whatever else because that will eliminate this position. But I'm in a role currently, personally speaking, where I should have been in class until about seven minutes ago. I should have been, like, I should have another job because this job alone does not even pay for my rent, not to mention groceries or school or anything else for that matter. And if this job takes so much of our time and my time specifically, I think it should pay as much as the work we put into it. So I'm moving forward the Madison average hourly wage, May 22, one. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's a motion on the floor to move forward. Do I have a second? Seconded by Vice President Figaro Cole. Further discussion, Alder Bennett and Alder Evers. Are your hands still up from the previous or, all right, Alder Conklin?
Wait, is this a voting item?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
Go ahead, Attorney Haas, please.
Thank you. The committee can vote on this, but I think we just need to clarify what you're voting on. We don't have any ordinance in front of you. This would, is it just a direction to draft an ordinance? For later consideration? I mean, any alder can tell us to draft an ordinance if they want to sponsor it. So you don't need a vote of the committee, but if the committee wants to express its preference, you certainly can.
Thank you for that clarification. Alder, there's alders in the queue that I had missed for my laptop being up. So Alder Conklin and then Vice President Figaro Cole.
Thank you, Chair. I want to thank the Finance Committee for putting this together. I really appreciate it. Obviously, everyone knows my position and I'm not gonna go over that again. But I do like how the doubling of the alder pay is more of a livable wage for people. And I think it would be more enticing to bring more people to the table and have their voice heard. But with much consideration, I am going to support at least the $5,000 increase for the alder pay. And with the talk of the budget and things like that, I understand. And again, I just want to be clear that we are not giving ourselves raises, that this is for the future, the next election cycle, election cycle for 2025. So it's not where I want to see it at, at all, not even a little bit. And I agree with Alder Govendarajan that we need to look at the hours because this is not a part-time job. It never has been. We put in way more hours than 20 hours a week. So again, we need to pay people accordingly for the work that they do. So with understanding the budget and the deficit that we are in, I would like to support proposing that we increase the alder pay by $5,000 for the next election cycle, budget cycle.
Thank you. So.
Not necessarily a motion, it's just what I wanted to support.
So for those of you who are attending virtually and with the clarification from Attorney Haas, any committee can make a recommendation. We were tasked as CCEC as saying that this was something that we wanted to work on and with direction from last meeting, trying to start with recommending something. So as Attorney Haas said, we don't necessarily need to take a vote, but now have two alders indicating that they have preferences for the $5,000 increase and then the one for Madison average hourly wage. I will then go to Vice President Figaro Cole for discussion.
Thank you. So I was going to take, I was gonna go and take it from the $5,000 up and suggest a $20 increase, which is just like $6,500 rate, using the same formula that was used for the $5,000 bucket. But I will definitely, that is not that far off from, I mean, I, I will support the motion, the motion that was made for the, for the, we shouldn't say here, the Madison average pay. But, but definitely, I would love, I would like for this body to just put something forward. Just put something forward, bring it to the 20 alders and let it decide. And if we can make the change to the ordinance, that's fine. I don't think the mayor is going to, on all the priorities that she has, she's gonna make us a priority to increase our salary at any time. So this is something that we need to manage ourselves. So I'm okay with the average hourly wage and have staff create a, an ordinance change for that to be presented. But I'm also okay with something fixed on the lines of like $6,500 or something like that, which will bring us to $20 an hour for, for the alders. And I don't know, I mean, I just want to clarify, do all of you have the spreadsheet available to you to enter the numbers? Okay, good. So there's formulas everywhere. So yeah, that's where I am with this.
Thank you. And I'll go to Alder Conklin has another discussion or question. I just want to remind us that last meeting, we asked Finance to come and propose, come with numbers proposed with the seat, three scenarios that were proposed by members of this body. And now I think I've heard two additional items of reconsideration. One would be considering a sliding scale and now one that would get closer to $20 an hour. And just remind us that to keep on track with making this, there still needs to be an ordinance change. And so if at all possible, if alders could at least talk about what's proposed, the three scenarios that are proposed for us today, and if needed, go back and ask for more direction on additional proposals. But to kind of put this issue to bed, I would ask that we don't add new proposals that don't have numbers attached or visual for us to conceptualize at that time. Alder Conklin.
And I just had a point of clarification. If Vice President Cole was talking about adding $20 to this or making, us making $20 an hour?
Well, either or. I mean, I'll let the alder speak to it, but it's not something in front of us. Would you like to answer?
Put the spreadsheet back up, please, right there. So just type 20 in the, on the template. So on Q7, I mean, I'm sorry, mine is different. I'm sorry. No, just go into the yellow, the yellow bucket in there and type, what is this, 1398? Type $20 on the yellow. Just type $20, 20. Yeah, it's fine. It's a copy.
I have to say what you saw.
And that will be the breakup. So the ordinance will say 20, 21, 57, 24, 34.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Which is not that off from the 1860 and is kind of not so far from the 2990. So I thought that would be it.
Okay, so a visual representation, another proposal that kind of slivers between adding a little bit more than 5,000 proposed, but a little less than the two times. Thank you for that visual, Vice Presidents Alder Govendarajan. Wrong.
Sorry, I forgot I clicked this.
Oh, okay. Wait. Looking at the time, I'm just gonna add my, forgot that he had pressed and doesn't have questions. So considering everything that everyone knows and was kind of reiterated tonight about our structural deficit, as well as the recognition for the work that we are doing, I am thinking about kind of recruiting and also the folks that come after us and the folks who serve on our many BCCs currently as volunteers and how, for instance, many of us were running and had attended committee meetings before to kind of get an understanding of the system and understanding of how the job functions or to even increase civic service by serving on one of these committees. I am most comfortable just looking at the numbers with the proposal of 5,000 additional for alders, seeing that it does get us closer to that $20 an hour rate and also the, the overall impact is under six figures, it's 81,000. And so even though I know that's not where many of us would like or think that that rate should go, weighing in all the factors that could impact whether or not an ordinance change would be successful this time around. I see one more alder's hand in the queue and then I'm gonna seek a little direction on how to move us forward, but moving us forward so we are able to adjourn at 6. Alder Bennett.
I, I will just say that I'm full-heartedly, well, I, I wanted to support Alder Govendarajan's motion. I think that does get us to where we need to go. And one thing I really want to point out that I think is really important for us to look at is the 2025 impact of these. The proposal for, the proposed 81,000, or sorry, sorry, brain's working. The proposed $5,000 weighted impact the budget by 81,000. And then for the Madison hourly wage, that would impact our budget by 280,000. And in a budget where a lot of the times, we think in the hundreds of thousands and millions, to me, this feels like a worthwhile investment. And then also, just give a quick check to federal poverty levels. For family size of one, federal poverty level is $14,000 a year. For family size of two, federal poverty level is someone making $19,000. For family size of three, it's 24,000. So even with the proposed $5,000, we're basically saying that, we're basically saying that it's okay for us alders to say, you know what, you're right. You can just like make enough that is barely the federal income poverty level, especially those with families with children. So I just, I don't know, I find the whole thing kind of ridiculous and it, it's something that it should have already been invested in. And I think that it's important for us to go back and to have conversations with our constituents. Should they like to speak with us? Because I believe that if you speak to any, any constituent and they hear that we only make, we make less than the federal income poverty level and we only make $15,000 a year while we work well over 80, 40 hours a week, it's, I think our constituents will understand why we're asking for this wage increase so that we can better serve them.
Thank you, Alder Bennett. Alder Govendarajan.
Thank you. And thank you for that, Alder Bennett. I previously did not know I live in poverty until now. I, yeah, okay, so I understand that potentially the hourly wage is too much given the reality of our budget, I think. And I know, President, you said that we should stick to the numbers on the spreadsheet, but seeing that we can change the numbers, I think I'm going to propose a different proposal than my first one. So I'm sorry. But I motion for the 2025 budget. We move forward with a 60% increase, which would come down to, sorry, one second, a 22.36 hourly wage. And then for the 2025, 2026 budget, we go to the, the average hourly wage of whatever the average is over there. And the reason I'm proposing that is because the next term will be, like, of course, all the alders will have to run for reelection to be on there, but it's also one-year terms for about half of us. So by the time that the second, like, the scaled increase goes into effect, all the alders would have had to run for reelection or there is an open seat or whatever. So this is not necessarily voting for an increase for us directly ourselves, which it never was in the first place. But I think having that scaled increase kind of gives a guarantee that we will eventually get to the place that we need to be at because whether it be a $5,000 increase or a 16% increase or whatever it is, that still is not where we need to be at, at the end of the day. And I would rather have that guarantee for the future people who serve in these roles. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Govendarajan. And because you made the first proposal or motion, I think to move us ahead, we'll, I'm gonna go to Alder Evers and then come back and maybe provide a suggestion. Alder Evers? Alder Evers.
Yeah. Well, just to remind everyone that I was the one who requested that we have this on our agenda to discuss, but I do think we have to, um, we have to avoid the tendency to engage in hyperbole. I don't know about you, but I do not work more than 40 hours a week in this job. And it's, we can't go around telling that all alders work more than 40 hours a week at this job. That all but of the 20 alders currently serving, uh, I think everybody except one has another job. That's the way it is structurally set up now. Or other sources of income perhaps, whether retirement income or whatever. We, TFOGS recommended that we go to full-time alders and we reduce, and that can, the number of alders to do that. We're not choosing to reduce the size of the orders. We're trying to increase our pay, but we have to acknowledge that, that we don't have support, at least now, from the Madison population for alders to get full-time pay for, for full-time work. We lost that battle. We can bring it back up, but that argument failed and was not, was, the voters didn't support it. I'm suggesting an incremental step forward that acknowledges that this is recognized right now to be less than a full-time job and most alders have another source of income to augment. To be only, for this job to only be 13 or $14 an hour is too low. Increasing it so it's closer to $20 an hour with a $5,000 increase is a step in the right direction that can be followed by further steps. I suggest to my colleagues, we're not going to get there successfully if we, I don't think we'll convince our colleagues if we try to get there all at once, particularly given our budget challenges. So let's try to stick with an argument that we can win and a strategy moving forward, not engaging in hyperbole, but engaging in, in arguments that will win the support of others, including our colleagues moving forward.
Thank you, Alder Evers. And I will apologize as Chair for the confusion or the contradiction in my next statement of saying, hey, let's not propose what's not before us. But considering Alder Govindarajan was the first to move forward with the proposal and now has what I think is pretty clear of a two-step, um, 60% increase proposed for 2025 and moving towards the 2026, towards the average hourly, hourly wage proposal for 2026, um, I think we'll take a roll call and see where that falls so we know how to continue moving forward. Alder Govindarajan, did you have a correction?
Just a quick point of clarification. I just emailed Aldo Alder, or the CCEC alders, um, my proposal in number, just so it's written out and easier to understand. So it's, that should be in your emails.
Can you all speak into the microphone, please?
Sorry, we're just trying to figure out what we're supposed to do here. Mike, do you want to maybe take the lead on this one?
We just wanted to confirm process-wise that the alders withdrawing his first motion and that's okay with the second, with those Alder Figueroa call? You okay with him withdrawing his first motion?
Yes, sir.
And you, you have a second, that your second motion is on the floor?
Second.
And there's a second to that? Okay, so that's where we're voting.
Thank you. Yes, please.
Okay, so this is a roll call vote. All right. Vice President Figueroa Cole?
Yes.
Figueroa Cole, aye. Alder Vitterver?
Aye.
Alder Vitterver, aye. Alder Madison?
Aye.
Alder Madison, aye. Alder Govindarajan?
Aye.
Alder Govindarajan, aye. Alder Conklin?
Aye.
Alder Conklin, aye. Alder Evers?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Evers, aye. Um, one, two, three, four, five, six ayes.
With six ayes, that is unanimous and passes. Thank you all for the.
Can I just clarify?
Yes.
Thanks. Um, so I guess, well, since this is not going to counsel at this point, what, my understanding is that's a direction for us to draft an ordinance sponsored by Alder Govindarajan, including those changes. Now, it didn't mention anything about the differential for President and Vice President. What we can do is, if you want, look at what's commensurate with what it is currently in the ordinance for a differential. Okay. And then are we keeping the same language about adjusting it on an annual basis? Okay. All right. Just want to make sure we had our directions right. Thanks.
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move forward to Agenda Item Six, which is Council Office Updates.
Okay, let me see if I can pull this up and be quick. Okay. I think some of the things I would like to draw your attention to in this update is that, um, as you're aware, as of November 8th, the IT will be making some more updates to the blog tool. They have provided for alders specifically a number of training, targeted training videos that are really specifically targeting the changes that you'll find in the blog tool, as well as some tip sheet documents that you can print out. Um, I sent this to everyone, uh, and they're also on the Alder Onboarding page of the web page, so that will be, you'll, you can go read them, watch them at your leisure. Um, we recommend, and IT really wanted us to make sure, we recommended that you maybe think about doing that. Of course, it's the seventh now, but do it as soon as you, um, you are able. And so that, that's, um, that's a big thing. And then I have some, some reminders and some information about courtesy deadlines. The, uh, City Attorney's Office, if you're working with a City Attorney's Office to draft, uh, an ordinance, please, um, note that they would like, um, to have final drafts of proposed ordinance changes back to the drafting attorney by noon on Tuesday before the council meeting. That gives them an opportunity to put the final version into Legistar in time for it to be ready for agenda generation and production, which starts Wednesday afternoon before the meeting. If you're requesting a news release from the council office, we would, we're asking if you wouldn't mind, um, providing that information to us, uh, 48 hours in, in advance so that, um, Larissa can do the preparation and background work to get those ready. Um, this is from four alders. So I, Isaac and I prepared and sent to each of you, Isaac and I prepared and sent to each of you an individualized spreadsheet asking for a number of pieces of feedback on your assigned committees. And, um, we did receive four, um, as we had done and will continue to do, if you'd like to set up a time to walk through it with us, we are more than happy to do that with you. We're starting our analysis now and we really would like to have your valuable input. So if you are interested at all in giving your two cents on the committees that you're on, please, um, get back with us either to set up a time to walk through it or just provide that for us because you really do have, all, all the alders really do have a unique perspective, having, serving on many committees, you know, simultaneously. So I really would like to hear your thoughts. So just a reminder on that. Um, and then also thank you to those of you who filled out my survey, um, with, in terms of your interest in some training, upcoming training, um, opportunities customized for us. So, um, I am going to be getting back to both, on, getting back to everyone on two, on two of the trainings, uh, soon. And the folks who said they were interested when they responded to my survey, I have sent out, um, follow-up, uh, questions to those folks and then I'll send out invitations to everyone. Um, so please, if you did respond, take a look at your, um, your inbox because you, you may have one or more, um, follow-up emails from me. I wanted to get the preferences of the folks who did respond. I'm very excited about both of these and, um, I'm going to try my best to get the NAMI one scheduled in December. If it doesn't work, we'll, we'll keep pushing forward and we'll get this, we'll get it out. But, um, please take a look at your inboxes and, um, please, uh, go ahead and let me know if you'd like to put in your, your two cents about the questions in those surveys. I'll stop there.
Oops, mic wasn't on. Thank you. And that is printed and copied at each of your chairs. So if you have any questions, please, um, refer them to Karen. Move us along to the next agenda item, Agenda Item Seven, Future Agenda Items. And we do have a lengthy list there, crossed out a couple of things. So I would ask if you have items to add, um, that you would reach out to myself, to Karen, or to send those recommendations to the CCEC email listserv. All right, that takes us to the end of our agenda. I would entertain a motion for adjournment. Moving seconded unless I see her here, some unanimous consent. That's it. Thanks all.